This conference will now be recorded.
Good evening, Council. Good evening, good evening, audience. We've talked about some of the, uh, the, you know, I would like to call over the, as this, you know, it's thirty six, it's thirty six, one twenty three, ten seventy, sixteen, seventeen, sixteen. Uh, members of the, of the council or president's, or president's, uh, in the chamber, I see the members, council member, town mayor, he has long lines, long lines. City in here, city in here. So, so I would like to, I would like to totally be with you, uh, to be actually, let us thank you, my, your council, and your, your, thank you, Father and Paddock, for all of your, for your, for your, for your, thank you for your guidance, and your, your guidance, and your reading, writing, getting to try to make, to make, by the same night, guys, and just, and, 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 and he is, and he is, and he is, and he is. You're saying with me for the, what I'm actually making for the, for the, for the. I put, when you, I put, when you, I, I, in the United States, in our space, we're, 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 we're also, uh, we're, we're, just my name, my, my, uh, we have this, uh, there's, there's, uh, uh. I don't know about you, but I, 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 citizen participation, and, and, uh, some, uh, uh, even though, you know, you're, 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 right after, uh, like, address, uh, city councils, city. It's thirty one, oh, on, thirty one, like, to address the state, like, to address the state. All right, I, uh, I, uh, I, uh, I, 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 Saturday, uh, Saturday, or, excuse me, May, uh, 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 I, 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 from seven A.M. to seven A.M., seven thirty, you know, like, where, like, your house, member, place, house, member, place, home, they call her, or, or, two years, to be out of patients, may, officials, or, or, at a place, on the ballot, face, we'll be accepted, we'll be standing, A.D., and we, 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 four D.I., four D.I., Saturday, D.I., Saturday, D.I., D.I., whatever, there's D.I., there's, there's, there's drop off, drop off, uh, next, uh, 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 behind the fire station, uh, 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 Hasslet Parkway, uh, 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 identification, identification, uh, 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 trust be shown, begin tax, uh, it's a, 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 it's uh, 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 twenty fifth, or, twenty eighth, or, twenty third, twenty fourth, we, 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 uh, number five, I, 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 I,[266.71][266.74][S02, I, 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 I,[268.71][268.74][S02, I, 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 I,
If you go through over to Community Park, you will see they have started grading off, grubbing out the grass and everything for the new tennis court project. They got signage up, got all their stormwater protection all around the site. So they're kicking off, getting ready. Matter of fact, we got our first pay request today that we're going to be going over for the next week or so to make sure that everything's in there that's supposed to be there so that they can get paid for their mobilization. So that project's up and going. Still, schedule, everything still is on schedule. So they're still expecting to get through as a thought in the first place. So this summer we should be seeing some tenants. Uh, on the public works equipment, we haven't gotten anything new, but our big back truck is still on schedule. We should see that thing like around the first of April should be showing up. We're excited about that happening. And on the Hasslet Parkway construction project, uh, they're moving forward. We're still having some issues with utility relocates over here along Avondale Hasslet portion. But when you get back over here to the east side, everything over there is going really well. Uh, we have a little bit of problem with a sub working out there on the lighting for the roadway. They're kind of, they're just slow. They just, there's nothing else you can say about. They are slow. Uh, but they are getting there. But other than that, that project's still going. And the portion for the L, uh, that is still on schedule. We should be driving on that, uh, this time next month.
Oh, excuse me. Every week, David Rogers and I have a project meeting concerning Hasslet Parkway and the Accelerated L. And with regard to the Accelerated L, there is a possibility, a possibility, it may be opened early. So they're doing that well out there, doing very well. Uh, Council, you got any questions for Mr. Rogers?
Yeah, just want, what's, what is the holdup on the utilities on Avondale Hasslet Port? That seems to be the biggest holdup.
The biggest holdup is Encore Electric moving their poles, uh, back. That's been the longest. And then, uh, Atmos has had some problems getting their part for the gas lines taken care of, but they seem to be finally moving pretty well on that. But all the other utilities, all these cable companies and everything, they can't move till Encore moves. So a lot of people are sitting there waiting right now in the wings, ready to jump on. And the biggest holdup has been at the railroad track, getting the permit to do that portion of removing the line over across that track has taken way longer than anybody ever anticipated. They just got that permit in hand last week. So that's been a big holdup.
I will say that on these issues, uh, a, a number of them with these, uh, whether it be Atmos or Encore, um, Hasslet's gotten involved and helped clear the way for a number of these because, uh, American Call, a level that the other project manager from Tech Dot won't or can't. And that's helped facilitate things. Uh, but nonetheless, it has been, um, taking longer than what anybody had anticipated. And, uh, but it is addressed almost daily. This schedule and the contact with all the contractors and all the other, um, enterprises that have to utilize these poles, or whether it's Atmos or any other utility, it's, it's, uh, talked and discussed almost daily among the engineering teams and Tech Dot and the construction companies. There, it's an active process.
Oh, yeah. Our, our man with, uh, Timmy Horn over there, Carl Dewitt, Z is, I think he probably is on the phone to them every single solitary morning, checking up, okay, what's going on today? How far are y'all getting today? Because he's, he's on top of them every day about something. All right. Thank you for the update. You're welcome.
Council. Any other questions? Um, checking, uh, Councilmember Morrow. Just want to, not, I'm not leaving you out. I'm watching. Okay.
Thank you very much.
If we can move on to, uh, item six, the consent agenda. Council, are there any items here you'd like to pull or ask questions about?
Uh, yes, Mayor Holsey, I'd like to ask a question on six C, the network access agreement.
Yes.
Uh, it said that there's no, oh, I'll wait for you to get up there.
Go ahead and ask me.
Okay, it said there's no, uh, cost for this agreement.
Right.
However, I noticed there is a, uh, annual fee of sixty one ninety-three per year.
So that, that's probably related back to the, the computers that are in the fire trucks. So we, we pay a monthly fee or annual fee for the computer. There's a cradle point that connects to the Fort Worth system. So that's what we pay an annual fee to is the computers. And they just missed this agreement when we did that whole dispatching one. They just realized they forgot essentially. So they sent it forward.
I think what, uh, Councilmember or Mayor Pro Tim Broyles might be asking is that we stated that there's no cost and it appears to be a cost.
It's not a new cost? Maybe we should have worded it that way?
Right. That, that would be better.
It's associated with that dispatching agreement.
So it is already in the budget?
Yes, ma'am.
The twenty, okay. And I, I want to clarify then, the thirty-five thousand that we have in there for the thirty five dollars per call thousand, that will now go away. Is that correct?
No.
That continues.
That's correct. That, they charge us for every time they dispatch us to a call. So that's the dispatching fee. And then there's the hardware component, which is the, the computers and, and the connectivity. That's a monthly fee. So two different fees.
Let me, uh, you hit on something there. The ILA that we have with the Fort Worth Fire Department, which serves the west side of Hasslet, west of the.
Oh, that's what you're referencing.
That's what will go away when we have that ILA in place with the City of Fort Worth Fire.
So there's a, there's a fire services ILA. That, that is what does auto mutule. And that's where they're helping us. And that's a fee. So that's a fire service ILA. And then there's a suburban dispatch fee, which is the, that thirty-five dollars a call. And then there's just this network access agreement for us to
Okay.
get our alerting.
And that, the one on the west side votes away?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay.
And we're in the process of that.
Right. That was my question.
Council, any other questions on the consent items? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I move to approve the consent. As written.
Motion is made to approve the consent, uh, agenda. Is there a second?
I second it.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, it's unanimous. Ayes have it. Item seven, public hearings, ordinances, resolutions, and action items. Seven eight, discuss, consider, and act regarding approving an ordinance calling the May sixth, twenty twenty-three general election and authorizing entering into a joint election agreement with other Tarrant County political subdivisions. Uh. I don't have a presentation per se. It's rather self explanatory unless you have some questions.
I would just, is this similar to what we've done in other elections?
It's identical.
Okay.
It's identical. Councilmember Morrow, I'm checking out there. Any questions? Okay. All right, then. Uh. Any discussion, consideration? Okay, if not, uh, I'll entertain a motion at any time.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
I move to approve the ordinance calling the May sixth, twenty twenty-three general election and authorizing enter, entering into a joint election agreement with other Tarrant County political subdivisions.
Motion is made to approve the ordinance calling the May sixth, twenty twenty-three general election and authorizing entering into a joint election agreement with other Tarrant County political subdivisions. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second that.
There is a second. Any further discussion? My call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Ayes have it. Seven B, discuss, consider, and act regarding approving an ordinance calling a May sixth, twenty-three special election and authorizing a joint election agreement with other Tarrant County political subdivision. Uh, I would like, as part of the presentation is to get our attorney, Jeremy Page, just give us an interview and how we got here.
Sure. So our city subdivision ordinance requires for pretty much all new residential developments for them to either convey a certain, uh, amount of parkland per residential lot or pay the city a fee in lieu of dedication to it. And so the ordinance that we're looking at today is dealing with the parkland that was dedicated as a part of the Caraway Phase Two plat. And so when the developer submitted that plat, they had, uh, dedicated to the city twenty-four, a little over twenty-four acres as parkland. And that was parkland that the city had requested, uh, in, in conformance with the city subdivision ordinance and that the city had accepted by, uh, the plat where it specifically labeled that part of the property as parkland. And both the P N Z and the council signed off on it. Um, due to it being dedicated as parkland, the local government code two fifty-three does require an election for the city to convey the property. Um, I know that there is, uh, I don't want to go into details, but I think the mayor will do that. But there is interest in, uh, someone else using the, uh, parkland for another public purpose. Unfortunately, though, there are, um, the state law is just very strict about what the city can do with this parkland. And if it wants to convey it, it will have to do an election. And so, uh, what's what we're looking at here with this ordinance is calling a special election to, which would allow the city to convey those twenty-four acres to, um, another entity. There are other parts of state law that does allow the city to reject parkland dedication. But unfortunately, uh, the fact that the city required this dedication and then accepted the dedication when it approved the plat, those factors are going to override that state law that would otherwise allow us to, um, reject the dedication.
Very, that's a great overview, um, of how we got here, why it's owned here. Uh, this particular land, um, and I would like to make mention that Mr. Tim McClure, who is Vice President of Facilities for Northwest ISD is online with us. And, um. Particularly Northwest is under contract at this point in time to purchase the corner of Blue Mound or, or, or that property within Caraway at the corner of Blue Mound and Harmon Road. And they are doing their due diligence right now. And the very specific purpose of this is to build an elementary school that will serve it. Those immediate subdivisions in that area, speaking very specifically of Caraway, Sweetgrass, uh, the vines and Watercraft. Of course, there might be some others from other areas, but that is the primary purpose. This portion that they're under contract with is still not sufficient for, for the campus as a whole. And that is, enters in why we are, are considering. And their need is more than fifty percent of this parkland that's been dedicated to fully develop this count, this campus. And, um, I'm going to, maybe now's an appropriate time to, uh, hand over to Mr. McClure and what else he might want to say about this area.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I'm, hope y'all can hear me okay? Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so I think Mayor's very accurately described, uh, yeah, we're in the, we're under contract right now. We're doing our due diligence, um, on the corner lot. Uh, that's about nine acres, um, in a normal site without, you know, uh, the creek frontage that we have there and, and some of the watershed area that we have there. You know, we'd normally be looking for somewhere around a fifteen acre site to do an elementary school. So obviously, we're below that site count. Um, this site is, is certainly, uh, very particular because there is, uh, watershed elements there. And it's not a stranger to us as a district for, uh, putting elementary schools next to those type of areas. In fact, our science department, our science teachers love those areas as a lot of, uh, to do science projects, take kids down and see, uh, microbiology at its, at its finest there along the creek side. Um, so those are great areas for us to be neighbors too. Um, as the mayor put, uh, probably somewhere around half, I don't know exactly the number that we would need. And most of that would be for drives and parking. The school itself, um, probably fits on that nine acres minus a little bit of a corner. Uh, the rest would be playground areas, uh, you know, public amenities that, uh, the neighborhoods could use. We, we allow our, uh, elementary, uh, play areas, uh, play fields and, uh, play equipment to be, uh, used off hours and on the weekends by the public. And so, um, the district would certainly want to connect to the neighborhood with walking paths and any trail systems that already exist there. Um, so we're just trying to get a balance of that site. If it was the city's preference to have us take all of it over, we would, we would entertain that. If it's the city's preference to have us take a portion of it over to satisfy the need, um, we would do that. So I think we're pretty lenient on, um, any opportunities that exist there to partner and provide that, uh, neighborhood and the surrounding neighborhoods and area with an elementary school to support the growth.
Thank you, Mr. McClure. Council, do you, uh, anybody have any questions from, uh, Mr. McClure?
I've got a question. Mr. McClure, so this means that the initial site is not going to be used, or it's not preferable to this twenty-four acre lot, is that correct? So it would be totally move, location of the elementary school?
No, the, the, are you talking about the initial nine acres that we're under contract with?
Yes.
Yeah, we need that nine acres plus this area. So, but the bulk of the actual building would sit on the nine acres that is part of the purchase that we're doing. Um, and so most of the building would sit right there on the corner. What would sit on the land that we're inquiring about, uh, is more parking and, um, play equipment and playgrounds and drives and sidewalks and trails to get to the building.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep. I have a question. Can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, please go ahead.
I think you answered it, Mr. McClure, but, um, I know our walking paths and trails already kind of not designated, but drawn out on, on some of the maps. You said you'd be willing to work with the city to either continue or to, um, you keep those, those trails where they are, or keep them, or put them in different spots with us, kind of coordinate that?
Absolutely. We do that with a lot of our different municipalities, especially in elementary site. We want safe, safe walking paths for students to get to schools. Um, if you look just up the road at Cinderella Ranch, uh, we have, uh, schools in the Cinderella Ranch, two different elementary schools. And, um, both of them have walking paths that come through the neighborhood, um, trail systems that go through the neighborhoods that help students get to, to there. But also provides that amenity for, um, the community to walk or exercise or on the weekends, take the family down to, uh, the elementary school playground and play. Um, so absolutely, we're, we're all about making those connections, uh, back to the neighborhood in a safe environment. Absolutely.
Mayor Holsey, I just have a real quick question too. And this could be to you, uh, Mr. McClure, or also to the city. I'm assuming, again, with the twenty-four acres is probably not developable when they looked at it from a Caraway standpoint. So I'm looking at, someone has at least initially looked at this from an engineering standpoint to make sure that you're able to put these type structures and actually build the way that you're wanting to?
Yes, sir. May I, I mean, to answer that or?
Yes.
That, we have an initial site plan concept. And, um, if you can imagine, uh, heading eastbound on Blue Mound, um, there isn't an area where you drive over a portion of a, um, of a drainage pipe that goes underneath the road and connects to that creek area that's along a lot of that unusable area that you're mentioning. So just past that is where we would like to take access with a drive. So it keeps it away from the main intersection. Um, we've talked to the mayor. We, we understand there'd be some road improvements that we would need to do as well, turn lanes and things like that. Um, but bring the, the drive in, uh, to the school for student pickup and, and drop off. At that point, bring them into the front door. Uh, the front door would actually face the neighborhood. Um, and so then our bus traffic would enter from, say, where the intersection is, although I know you'll have a master city thoroughfare plan that moves that intersection, which actually works with our plan as well. We've worked with city staff and the mayor on that. Um, so it keeps the residential cars being able to turn in a little bit sooner than getting all the way down to the corner. Uh, our buses can enter on the backside there independent of the, of that traffic. And then there would also be a, a drive, we're proposing a drive that would connect, uh, to the neighborhood. So Caraway neighborhood traffic could enter the site independently from other neighborhoods coming. So you don't have to bring that traffic into Caraway to access the site. Um, and then they both have equal access back out, uh, onto, uh, that either back into the neighborhood or back out, uh, to leave, um, the school site. Um, so there, there's most, like I said, most of that is, is roadway. So it's just following along the creek line, uh, just to get our drives in and make sure we have the right access to get to the, to the, to the site.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor, one question. On the, the twenty-four point one acres that's in question here, is that the entire lot that the city owns or deeded to the city for the park? And where I'm going with this is, are we going to get, we're looking to give the school district a hundred percent of that lot? So it takes all the liability away from the city on the maintenance of that, that.
Well, as, as, uh, uh, Mr. McClure had previously stated, we, you know, is that we can do all of it? Or, you know, whatever their minimum need is. And that's up to the council, you know, and I, I want everybody to keep in mind, this is a multi-step process. First process is taking it to the voters. Do you want to give the council the ability to do this? If that proposition passes, then there's a negotiation within ISD, you know, whether it's giving or paying or somewhere in between. Uh, that's yet to be done. And that's, that's a council, uh, decision. That's a negotiation. Uh. And there'll be.
Mayor Holsey, could I ask a question on your first, on your first point on that then? Um, point, just in case the citizens come back and they deny this, or we, is there going to have to be a different location for the school at that point?
Uh, I'm not thinking that far ahead. I kinda am, but I don't know the answer to that question. It'd be a big disappointment to several entities, uh, for that to happen. That would, uh, cause I will tell you, that school is very specific to Hasslet, Texas.
Uh, and I'll try to answer kind of a couple of those questions. So the ordinance authorized the city council to sell those twenty-four acres, but it does not mandate council to do so. And so like the mayor said, we have not entered in into any sort of contract or even begun negotiations with the school district to sell this And so like the mayor said, we have not entered into any sort of contract or even begun negotiations with the school district to sell this property. And so that will come later on in determining how many acres and how much we would be selling it for. This would simply give us authorization to do that. And so hopefully that answers that question. And what was the other question?
I could speak to the maintenance portion then, and that was, yeah, we're going to maintain whatever portion we acquire. So if that's all of it, then then the district would maintain all of it.
Oh, and then your question about, so if if this, if it were to go to the election and the voters voted it down, then the city council wouldn't be authorized to sell it. And so we could possibly hold another election on a later date to try to sell the same thing again. But until we have that authorization from the voters, we would not be able to sell this park.
Mayor Halsey, I have a few questions for Ms. McClure and then later for the council on you. This fall, I met with many caraway residents that were very concerned that that property was donated to the city to be developed as a park. And they were seeing that it was not developed as a park and was not going to be in the in the plans that the city had. So I, for their sake, what kind of guarantee do we have that whatever you do, it would be conducive that they have free access to that area for their walks, for their to take their children through where it's safe and whatever you might consider doing, especially in the undeveloped part of the park.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, I don't know that we have any written guarantee other than the than our our existing experience with other neighborhoods. And that is we outside of COVID, which, you know, I don't really want to get into that, but we had to lock down our playgrounds for public use during COVID. But our campuses are a part of the community. We want them to be a part of the neighborhood, especially at the elementary level. That's what we're talking about here is elementary school. So we want them to be a part of that neighborhood and environment. We want them to act as a as a resource, as an amenity to the neighbors. And that's the way they perform throughout our district. So we don't have any written guarantees that we give neighborhoods on that. It's just a public amenity that they can use, of course, off hours. We have, we have actually areas, Trophy Club, Beck Elementary School. They have a walking path that literally goes right through the playground of Beck Elementary. When we do have gates up that asks the patrons of Trophy Club to not walk through that area while school is in session. But the gates are not locked, but that's just a safety precaution. So we have, we have situations like that where we do maybe put up a sign that just says, you know, if you're in this area during school hours, we may ask you to to leave just as a safety precaution for our students. But other than that, everything, all the amenities remain open and available for community use.
Okay, with that being said, let me also say, you know, I'm not trying to attack Northwest ISD, but I have also received complaints that when they've gone to use facilities at other schools, maybe middle schools or high schools, that they can't use the tennis courts or whatever is available there, they're locked.
Yeah, that would be only at the high school levels. The high schools are the only places that we lock our facilities up for varsity sports. So middle schools, in fact, you know, we're about to open Worthington Middle School there in your neck of the woods. And that tennis court facility will be absolutely available off hours for public use. We do not lock our middle school tennis courts down. They actually have timers on them, so if the community wants to come use them, I think the timers have a hard stop at 10 o'clock. But if it's dark, they can they can turn the timer on and light the courts at our middle schools. But so you're you're you are accurate at the high school level. We do secure our high school areas, but our middle schools and elementaries, we do not.
Okay. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just gonna say that that would include the track and the and the football field at the middle school level as well.
Okay, so citizens can walk the track.
One one interjecting. No one having a spouse that's a retired NISD employee coat. I can, I can tell you the the school district partners with all the communities they're involved with very well and trying to make access access to neighbors, to any of the equipment they have. I mean, my sons alone use tennis courts at the middle schools while they were in school. So here in the area, they're a very good partner for the community and allowing access to, you know, equipment that they have.
Yeah, I, you know, and I'm just speaking on behalf of the caraway residents. I know that they will be very upset if that isn't used for a park or something that they can have access to. I also have another, an email from someone that was asking, did Northwest look at have other alternatives or other locations that they were looking at and what that might have been and why it was made this decision?
Absolutely, I'll be happy to speak to that. This is probably option number eight at this point. We've been trying to locate an elementary school between those four developments with that one developer for the better part. Well, it started before COVID. And when COVID came back, the developer, in my opinion, moved a little aggressively to start some areas. I don't want to speak poorly towards the developer, but we we thought we had an agreement to put a school in one of those four developments. The housing boom took off, the developer took off, and we were left standing by the wayside. So we've worked with the developer and the city to look at, again, I'm not exaggerating. This is probably the eighth site that we've looked at. We've looked at purchasing neighbors' properties and trying to connect to those sites. We've looked at maybe purchasing land from the actual developer, but they were already so far down in the plating process, it was going to be too astronomical of an expense for us to try to capture that. We've, you know, looked at every option we possibly could. This is the eighth one. If this doesn't work out, then I'm on to number nine. I mean, we're just, we got to really get some relief for the number of homes that are going into that area with that developer. And so, yeah, I comfortably can say, I think the mayor even has a map that I've sent him that had them enumerated up to about eight different sites that we've evaluated, as well as some of the property the city owned, we evaluated it as well. So we've looked at a lot of, a lot of options.
Thank you, Ms. McClure, for your transparency. That's all the questions I have. But I do have additional questions. Do you want me to hold those or ask now?
Now is as good a time as any.
So I I'd like to ask, and we already have talked about conveying versus selling. And on the ordinance, in paragraph one, it says convey. And then in section 1A, it says sell. So that's a little confusing. Are we conveying or selling? And I think you maybe already addressed that, that this really ordinance is just to get on the.
I think maybe, Mayor Protem is, does the word convey mean give?
So convey is just, it's a any form of transfer of property. So if we sell it, donate it or anything along those lines, kind of an umbrella term to cover all.
But we could decide this convey, give or sell.
Yes, and so we.
That's a later decision.
I would have to look into that more so to determine what we would have the ability to do. But yes, that would be something that we would address later on.
All right. And then I also, on section 2A, when I read this, the statement that would be put on the ballot, it just seems to be, it's a little ambiguous. So if people are voting, they're really, you know, nobody really wants to get rid of parkland. You know, everybody wants to keep their park and whatever you could do for that, they want green spaces. So it doesn't say what it's going to be for. So it seems like, could we make it a little bit more specific that it would be designated for Northwest ISD?
Or more descriptive?
Descriptive.
So I want to talk into, I have the exact same comment, Mayor Protem. I said, can the ballot wording be specific to its future use? So that was a big concern of mine as well. So I'm interested to see if that can be changed.
So first of, I think something that we could certainly insert would be the fact that this is located within the caraway development so that people know where this is, because they may not know the location just based off of either the legal description or the fact that it's founded by those three roads. I mean, we could also put the 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 future use of it. But again, that's just going to bind the council as well as to how it moves forward on the property. And so if, and I would just say, and you could say, and to enter into a contract with Northwest ISD for the sale of this, for the conveyance of this property. And again, though, that that would though limit the city cost. If it were to pass.
And this needs to be finalized by 17. And I I understand what you're asking for, Councilmember Morrow and Mayor Protem. And, you know, when I read it, it hmm, okay, what am I doing? And it does need to be more descriptive. And Mr. Page and I can work on that. And it's something that is descriptive, that describes the use and the intent of it.
Okay, and I have a couple more questions. A question was asked, who will be able to vote in this election specifically? Is it just the City of Hasslet residents?
Yeah, so this would be just an election for the residents of the City of Hasslet determining whether or not this park.
Okay, and people were concerned they would like to see a map or something. I don't know if we have one to put up. And also, what would be the cost or have we looked at what the cost would be to develop a park on this piece of property? I know maybe we don't have a specific, but what would we be looking at to develop this property?
Okay, two questions there. So one, I'll ask Mr. Rogers to come up and address that. And then two, I'll ask Mr. Hawry to pull up those two maps.
Okay, I can answer about development. As he's playing, a big portion of this is floodplain, a lot of it. And then it has big challenges on the fact of the grade elevation changes are so steep. We had done a rough cost estimate just to do the trail system and a parking lot. On top of that was going to be about 1.25 to 1.3 million dollars. And that was no active anything. That's just to meet the ADA requirements, because just a trail can't just be a trail. We have to deal with grades and stuff, so that was going to be quite expensive. Any other stuff would take fill and shaving of the existing hill to flatten out anything. Because we'd look at a possible, you know, ball field, something simple. And that was pushing close to $2 million to build a site big enough to do so.
So are you saying $2 million for one ball field?
For a baseball field area, big enough to handle that.
And then another 1.2 to develop the rest of the trails.
Trail system developed out, keeping that ADA grade.
Oh, how long ago was that estimate done?
Oh, that's probably right at four, five years old now. So it's probably a little higher.
Okay, well, let's add some inflation on that, baby.
Yeah, there would be a good 15%, 20% possibly with construction costs.
So I'm hearing 3.2, so we're very easily approaching $4 million to have one ball field and trails. Any other questions for Mr. Rogers specific to cost of development?
You're welcome.
Okay, what we have in front of you, this is a taking, I'll give credit to Google Maps. You see the site for reference. Now here's the commercial, here, here's the corner lot off on the right in the corner that NISD is under contract with doing due diligence. The perimeter of that, I'll call it, looks like a sandlot, let's call it that, is where the donated property to the City of Hasslet starts. And let's, would you pull the other plat up? This is the plat. This is the instrument that donated this property. So starting on the west side, at the bottom of the page is Blue Mound Road. And this, I believe, is north-south is Intermodal Parkway, is that correct? All right, so that describes the bounds that was cited in the ordinance. So going to the east, we notice this is all floodplain. And this is a big challenge, the rest of it to the west is a big challenge for development. But nonetheless, let's go to the second page. Okay, here's the remainder of it. Now here, this arc line is follows that property that's under contract. And you can see how far up it goes, but from the north line up here, out to, let's go back to the previous page, please. There's a lot, and I don't recall the number there, 38 and 39. So from that lot line, 38 and 39, back to the east is the property estimated, and that can change. I'm not signing NISD up to anything, but that's their estimated area they need for their campus for the elementary. And for those in the audience or anywhere else online that they can see this, I'm pointing to this lot line right. So here, down this way is, I'll say, the base need, and that's plus or minus. That's plus or minus. Let's go back to the Google map, please. Very good. On the Google map, you can see the grading. You see the trail here on the west side of this property. So right there where that green line is, so from there over to the east is the approximated need right now. Now, it could be less or more, but from plans that I've seen, and if I were at Liberty, I don't have that site plan, that'd be good, but I'll, you know, that could be as part of our educational part in going forward to show these different plans and why it would be needed. So this is an approximation from that green line to the east would be the need. All right then, any questions with regard to that?
I have a question, Mayor Halsey. Currently, the property that's under contract on the corner, they're Blue Mountain Harmon. What is that zone?
Commercial.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right then, Council, if there, Councilmember Morrow, I'm just checking with you, doing a deliberate check out there. You're good? All right then, if there are no other questions. Now, please remember, this item is to put this before the voters. You're not deciding anything other than do we do not do this or do we put it before the voter? And let the voters decide. And the voters being very specific asset residents.
I did have one question, Mayor Halsey. When the motion is made, will they have to say that they that they would like the ordinance to be more specific on the wording for the ballot? Or is that something that you and the attorney will get together and then come back with that? Like you mentioned, there's a timeline, so.
So if you have things you want the ballot language to include, I would specify that. Because simply saying you would like the ballot language to be more specific is not specific enough for us, though. We'll need to, if you would like to have location or certain things like that, I would put that in the motion.
Let me, let me go ahead and tell you what I notes, okay. One is location, being more specific to that. Then use. What is the use of that location? Yes, it's NISD, but we can also put NISD Elementary School with regard to you know, part of the property or remainder of the property not used for specific campus facilities, I'll say hard construction, such as roadways and access and the the building itself is a you might help me out, Mr. McClure, some teaching by, you know, nature teaching facilities with public access.
Yep, I don't think that's appropriate.
Any other suggestions here?
Would that, do you think that'd be descriptive?
Yes, I like that. I think it might satisfy the residents that live around that area.
All right, I have taken this down, Mr. Page, and I'm sure you have too. And we can work with this, and I have a, I have a very good idea as to what you're looking for. Absolutely. All right then, any other items on this? Where I'm headed is to. Where I'm headed is to entertain a motion. Would someone like to entertain a motion?
I guess I can take a stab at it, but I'm looking at this seven B and what we actually presented here. So we want to say with a special purpose of this other stuff going on. Cause I thought originally in seven B is we're just authorizing this special election at this point.
We, that's what we are doing. We're authorizing, we would be authorizing this special election. And what the, the brief discussion and the notes that I took is very specific to what the wording on the ballot would be.
That's sort of where I'm still confused. Am I, are we making a motion just to authorize the joint election agreement and other Terrant County political subdivisions? Cause that's just one piece. It almost sounds like the second piece, you're wanting to amend the draft agreement that has been presented.
I would suggest this. One is to make a motion to approving ordinance calling for the May 6, 23 election and authorizing, you know, the rest of that sentence. But also, uh, clarifying the ballot language to include location. The use as an elementary school, uh, campus, and also to include the remainder of that property being a nature teaching, uh, uh, area with public access.
I didn't write all that stuff down. So did someone write everything down to make a motion?
All right. I wrote it down. Who would my, I didn't want to, can you read? Can you read it? Those three both, uh, Northwest ISD, okay? But that will be the heat. That will follow with the heat.
All right.
Yeah.
Mayor Holsey, I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
To approve an ordinance calling a May 6, 2023 special election and authorizing a joint election agreement with other Terrant County political subdivisions. Uh, to spec- and specify the location.
The ballot language.
The ballot, to, uh, specify on the ballot language, the location, use, and nature teaching public access without public access. For the property.
Okay. Motion is made to approve ordinance calling for May 6, 2023 special election and authorizing a joint election agreement with other Terrant County political subdivisions, but also clarifying the ballot language to include the location. Did I capture your motion correctly?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
All right. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? All right then. I call for the vote. All in favor. Councilmember, all opposed.
As an NISD employee, I'm going to abstain. An NISD employee, I'm going to abstain.
As understood. Councilmember Morrow abstains. Uh, it's four, four. The eyes have it. Thank you, council. Thank you, Mr. McClure.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. Uh, thank you very much. Will, will be available for any further coordination that you might, any further coordination that you might.
Thank you. Seven C, discuss, consider an act regarding an ordinance amending the Hasslet City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Three, Building Regulations and Chapter Ten, Subdivision Regulations, Exhibit A, Subdivision Ordinance Number Zero Nine Zero Three Dash Zero Four, Concerning Expiration of Preliminary Plats. The, uh, I'm going to let, I know that, uh, Mr. Swankie and Mr. Page been deeply involved in this. So Mr. Swankie, would you like to start us off?
Yes, Mayor and members of the council. Within our current code of ordinances, there is a discrepancy in one section, which is section three, which deals with building permits and building regulations as a preliminary plat expiring in 12 months. Section 10, which is a subdivision ordinance, has it for two years. And so there's a conflict there. You know, if somebody looks at our ordinance and they read just the first part, they think their preliminary plat is going to expire in 12 months. However, you look at the subdivision, it's two years. And so what do you use? But what this does is it cleans up the language and makes the citation only in one location, which would be in the subdivision regulations. But in, in the chapter three, building regulations, it refers you to the, uh, subdivision regulations. So there will be no confusion. Also, we're splitting the difference going from 12 and two years to 18 months, which is adequate time. But if for some reason it's not adequate time, the applicant can come before the planning and zoning commission and the city council and appeal and ask for an extension of 180 days. And that's pretty much the crux of this ordinance that you're looking at tonight.
You know, it was, when I first got involved in this, it was very interesting. Why are we even talking about preliminary plats under permit? Would you shed some light on that?
Well, I guess, within what regard, what would you like me to just?
Pardon?
Well, so I guess with the preliminary plats, they are grandfathered and once they submit a per, uh, once they submitted it. And so in that way, it is in that regard, it's a permit. And so we have had issues where people try to submit plats and they just kind of keep going and going and going. And then, and we need to have, uh, explicit expiration date as to when they do expire and when something new would be submitted. So that way we know what regulations apply to them as things change and so that they're not.
And I, I'd like to, uh, add the local government code. I don't recall the second chapter number explicit. But does refer mentions very specifically that a preliminary plat is a permit. And that's why you see it in that place. But the important thing was to have one place where we call out the expiration. A future city council may want to change it. This council may want to change it. But we have one place and not two.
And so by simply referencing the subdivision ordinance, that will avoid any confusion. So five years, 10 years down the line, if we're wanting to change expiration period for preliminary plat, we're only having to change it once. There's not that, uh, possibility or less of a possibility, I guess, that there may be confusion or, uh, errors being made like there are right now.
Thank you very much. Anything you want to add as to the council? Do you have any questions for Mr. Page or Mr. Swankie or myself?
Mayor Holsey, I do have a question. It's probably for Mr. Swankie. Um, I guess it's sort of, I think it was the last city council meeting or it might've been the one beforehand. We were talking about getting preliminary plats and we weren't getting all the information that we needed in those preliminary plats. So that's really one of the questions. You know, I think we made the adjustments to make sure that we're getting everything we needed. But it leads to the second one. What happens if the plat, that, um, after 18 months and they don't free up? What happens to that?
It expires.
The expiration means they have to start from day one?
That is correct.
Okay.
Counsel, any other, uh, any other questions? Mr. Page?
I had one question. Um, I had one question. Um, I think Mr. Page, I've answered it though. You said that, I've answered it though. You said that they're grandfathered in other preliminary plats, under review, under review.
So any, what do you, go ahead.
Yeah. I, I, you did cut out a bit. So I, I think I'm going to try to answer it to what I think you're asking. They, so preliminary plat, um, they have what's called vested rights from the time that they submit it. And so, um, those vested rights attach so long as that preliminary plat is, uh, valid. Um, at some point, uh, if a development moves forward, they have a final plat and those vested rights continue on so long as they complete the development and do what they need to do. But by, when the preliminary plat expires, those vested rights disappear as well. And so when they have to start back over, the, they will have, they will be subject to whatever the current development regulations are at that time that the new preliminary plat is, uh, submitted.
Good job. Good question. Uh, any other questions for Mr. Swankie? Mr. Page?
One quick question. How many of these do we have where there's the discrepancy that, 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 you know, whether it's the developer, whoever that's come back and said, look, no, it's not 12 months, it's 24 months. Do we have any ongoing disputes with any developers now?
Not at this time. It's something our engineer ran across and said, hey, there's a, and our, our political works director that said, we've got a problem here. We want to make sure we don't let that problem come up and bite us. So we said, let's just go ahead and address it. And so we talked about in our development review committee meetings and we came up with the, this, the 18 month as an appropriate timeframe.
Let me. I don't recall who it was. I mean, the question was, we're at, and, and we have regular meetings called DRC, Design Review Meetings where directors, supervisors, heads of each department get together and we consider, uh, well, we'll meet with clients if there's clients, but a lot of it, we are studying and refining our own internal processes in our ordinances. The question was asked, so when does the preliminary plat expire? Well, uh, one of the members went right to preliminary plat. We have a section in our subdivision ordinance that says, I mean, about preliminary plats. Right there it said 18 or two years. Later that day, I'm going through this subdivision ordinance and found under permit, no, it expires in 12 months. And I threw that, we all work together. We get multiple eyes on one topic. And that's how we, when we look at an ordinance, we look at it from many different aspects. Then we throw in our chain, you know, here's what we should, ought to do. Well, two years. Well, 18, you know, 12 was viewed too short. Two years was literally, I mean, that's how the communication went. That's just too long. Let's, uh, let's apply 18 months. 18 months is a very sufficient time to go from preliminary plat to final. Anyway, that's how that transpired, but, um, Mr. Swankie, it'll summarize. But I did want to give them insight how we communicate and work as a group, how that actually came about. But very good. Did I answer the question? All right, good. If there's not any more questions, I would certainly entertain a motion.
Mayor Holsey?
Yes.
Uh, isn't it scheduled for a public hearing?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right then. Uh, I opened the public hearing at eight oh nine PM. Would anybody in the chambers or online like to speak to this item? There are none in the chambers. Is there anyone online? There are no requests online. All right. I will close the public hearing at eight 10 PM. Item three, discussion, consideration and action. Counsel, do you have, uh, any discussion you would like? Any questions you'd like to ask staff or anyone else? Very good. If not, I entertain a motion, please.
Mayor Holsey?
Yeah.
I move to approve an ordinance amending the Hasslet City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Three, Building Regulations and Chapter Ten, Subdivision Regulations, Exhibit A, Subdivision Ordinance Number Zero Nine Zero Three Dash Zero Four, concerning expiration of preliminary plats presented.
Motion is made to approve the ordinance amending the Hasslet City Code of Ordinances by amending Chapter Three, Building Regulations and Chapter Ten, Subdivision Regulations, Exhibit A, Subdivision Ordinance Number Zero Nine Zero Three Dash Zero Four, concerning expiration of preliminary plat. Is there a second?
Mayor Holsey, I'll second.
There is a second. Any further discussion? If not, I call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All right. It's unanimous. The eyes have it. Executive session, I have no, uh, uh, need to present anything in the executive session. Uh, let's go to item 10. Future agenda items. Does anyone have any future agenda items?
I had one thing I wanted to ask about. It might not be, ask about, it might not be. Um, we haven't received, we haven't received 2023 meeting schedule, meeting schedule. I was wondering if that's something that we could get sent out or we could get sent out or.
I'm sorry you broke up. Did any, please restate that again.
And I'm sorry, it's a little, I'm sorry, it's a little, a 2023 city council, 2023 city council meeting.
I do not believe it's online yet.
You want a 2023 city council meeting agenda, schedule?
Schedule. Yes, please. Yes, please.
Very good. We can do that. It'd be, uh, our intent to email that out tomorrow to all members. We'll do it again.
Is it posted online now? Cause I did notice last time I looked, I saw last year still out there online. So I did not.
Uh, please, uh, Ms. Lamb, make a note of that. We'll check that tomorrow as well. Is, uh, what's posted on our website. Uh, Councilmember Morrow, we'll get that out tomorrow. All right, uh, that being there's no request for agenda items, not tonight anyway. All right then. If we could go to item 11, adjourn, may I have a motion?
Mayor Holsey, I move to adjourn.
Motion is made to adjourn. Is there a second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Unanimous. Eyes have it. Good night, council. Good night, Hasslet. Eight 13 PM.